Mayor and City Council. I'm Mary Santi, a member of League of Women Voters from outside Burchwood. I'll be your moderator. And this program is going live on your government channels, so call your neighbors and have them tune in, too. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization which encourages citizens to participate in government. Our mission is to support voter education and voter rights. The League studies and takes positions on issues, but we do not endorse any candidate or any political party or oppose them. Our goal is to encourage citizens to learn more about the positions of the candidates who will be on their ballot on November 8th. All candidates who filed to run for these positions were invited to participate. And I would like to introduce candidates who are here. And for council, there is Ryan Hankins, Kathy Weir, and then an additional mayor candidate qualified to participate because she meets the criteria of League of Women Voters, Margaret Ford. And Michael McKenzie are mayoral candidates. And the third mayoral candidate declined our invitation. Our format will start with questions, so no opening statements. For the first questions, candidates will answer in order that you're seated on the bench, and thereafter, the order will be rotated among you. Candidates will have a minute to respond to each question, and then after everyone has answered, each of you will have another minute to say something additional or rebut as you choose. You do not have to use your full time. Just say what you have to say and be done, and then we'll have time for more questions. Then at the end, there'll be one minute each for closing statements. Our timekeeper here will show you a warning sign of 30 and 15 seconds, and then a stop sign at that time, you can finish your sentence. No need to stop mid-word. We received many questions on our website. We will not use questions that are unclear, if they're hostile, of the personal nature, and we have consolidated questions that fall in the same general topic area. And all questions become the property of League of Women Voters. So let us begin with our first question, and it will go to Ryan Hankins. What do you like best about Burchwood? And what do you believe is the city's greatest challenge?
Yeah, so first of all, let me say thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting these events. And this event in particular, let me say thank you to Michael, Margaret, and Kathy for being here tonight. And, you know, and let's also say, we, let's, let me say, I'm so glad the pandemic is over. The weather is beautiful. And, you know, we are, we are, you know, we're moving forward here, and our, oh, our roads are open. You know, and, you know, I appreciate, I appreciate all that. I guess the answer, I think, to what our biggest challenge in Burchwood is, and I think this coincides with the people here tonight, is getting people more involved in the community and in our government. And, you know, it's, Kathy and I are here tonight running unopposed two candidates for two seats, and I think it's very important that we make sure that we have at least as many candidates as seats going forward and maintain our autonomy as a community.
Thank you. Kathy Weir.
Well, my favorite part about Burchwood is just the surroundings, that deep Upper North Shore feel of our area that we kind of have with just that very close proximity to the cities. It makes it very handy, and also the White Bear Lake is just a beautiful location in general. I would agree with Ryan that due to the pandemic and other outside aspects of the community over the last few years, it has been harder to have that community feel, but it, I think there's great potential for that here due to our Fourth of July celebrations and other activities that we have here that really can, we can utilize as a community to bring people together.
Thank you. Margaret Ford.
I'm not a longtime resident of Burchwood, but I've been here since 2020, and I've really formed a very deep bond with the community. I love it here. You know, it's a beautiful place, and the people are welcoming and very friendly. I take daily walks to all corners of the village, and I love the fact that it's very different no matter where you go, but yet the same energy there, good energy here. And I hope that we can maintain that energy and improve it, and that's why I'm running for mayor. I love to bring people together, and I love community building.
Thank you. Michael McKenzie.
Good evening. First of all, my wife and I both grew up in White Bear Lake, and so my first experience with Burchwood was having friends over here and coming over here as a young man. We learned to love the town before we lived here and thought it was kind of a dream place to move to, and we moved here in 94 and have been here ever since. As far as the challenges facing the city, I think one of the bigger ones, I would reemphasize what a couple others have said about getting people involved and making sure everyone's on the same page, but I'm a little concerned about the kind of acrimonious nature of the council meetings, about kind of deteriorating in trust between the city government and the city. And I think all of that is fixable, and I think the vast majority of people in the city want it improved, and so that's one of my main goals.
Thank you. For our next question, we're going to do it a little different because there are questions specific to your office that you're running for. So the two council candidates will answer this question, and then the two mayor will answer the next question. So you can take a break over here. I go first to Kathy Weir. Describe your leadership style and your management experience. And to me, it looks like the question is the same for both, and so why don't we just have everyone answer? So.
All right. Well, I have been a manager for my current employer for five of the seven years I've worked for them. I manage a small team of designers as well as account associates and other individuals. One of my biggest compliments from one of my employees actually was that she refused to switch roles if I wasn't going to be her boss. So I do work very well with other people and trying to manage their strengths and their ability to take on a task. I also tend to try and build up people's strengths and pick tasks for individuals so that they can work within what they can do and help them along as well.
Thank you. Michael McKenzie.
Well, my management experience, well, first of all, I'm a teacher by profession for the last 34 years, so there's a fair amount of management involved in that. But for eight of those 34 years, I was the local president for the White Bear Lake Teachers' Association Education and Minnesota Affiliated Union. And that was a full-time job, running the union for a little over 600 people, 20 part-time employees, and 40 business agents or building stewards. So I think that bodes well for being able to do this job. My management style is very inclusive. I feel strongly that we need to get the citizens more involved. I think we have to make all the decisions based on what's best for the citizens, not necessarily what has been done in the past or what nitpicky things are in the building code.
Thank you. And next answer, Ryan Hankins.
Yeah, I want to go a little different direction on the leadership question, and what I think we often think of as leadership in positions in particularly local government is figuring out and having a bunch of people come to us and deciding between the options those people offer. And I can say, you know, having served on the Planning Commission and on the subdivision task force and done some work on, you know, significant work improving the city's IT infrastructure, that those things are very seldom brought to the city leaders on a silver platter. And my strategy has typically been to go and find areas where we're having problems, dig in, make an attempt at making improvements as an individual, and then reaching consensus after a lot of that individual work has been done. And my improvements to the fee schedule, for example, are moving through the city council right now to kind of streamline at least that one small part of the city operations.
Thank you. Margaret Ford.
My management style starts with respectful listening to all stakeholders and partners in whatever we're trying to do. And I believe that you need to gather all data that's relevant to the decision or the processes that you're trying to work with or decisions to be made, and then welcome input from the community, and then, you know, work towards a solution that everyone can live with. I think often you won't find a solution where everyone is completely happy with it, but we try to work towards modus vivendi, and I think that was, that is very important. My experience has been, I've been a lawyer for 35 years. I was president of my law firm. I practiced property tax law in that, where you're dealing with government agencies on a daily basis. And I believe that there is a way to manage a situation respectfully, and there are always a solution when people are reasonable.
Thank you. And I neglected to offer time for anything further. If any of you would like to add something, you would have another minute. Michael McKenzie.
I would, I'd like to reinforce something that Ryan said because it struck a chord with me. I think it's important that the council become a little bit more proactive than it has been in the past, and search out not only ways to improve, but people to help us improve and be a little bit less reactive. I think we can, we can go out and make the place better without waiting for something to get brought to us.
Anyone else, something to add? Oh, we'll go to the next question then.
I would have one, one small thing to ask.
All right, Margaret Ford, thank you.
All right, yeah. I do agree that it's always good to look for new opportunities and especially looking for financing opportunities and for monies that are out there that we can get from either a federal level, state level, county level. That is very important, and it's important to be creative in those endeavors. But I would like to say that I think present administration has done a great job, and has sought outside funding and has been successful doing that. Thank you.
I would agree that they did a great, they did a great job with the upcoming, hopefully, lift station and various other things, that there's been some great strides for additional funding and creativity in that regard.
Yeah, I would just like to add, and a little bit of agreement here, in that we need to be proactive in finding solutions. The city is involved right now with two lawsuits on property improvement matters. And, you know, this is a perfect example of where ambiguities in our code and in our, particularly our variance processes, need consideration and much, much more deliberation there. And, you know, I think we need a leader, and leaders in the city who can look at those things and make improvements, because residents are going to come up and say, "I hate your variance process." What they're going to come up and say is, "I hate that I can't get a variance," or that I don't know what to do to get one.
Okay, we'll go on to the next question, and it will go first to Margaret Ford. Please describe your personal approach and experience when it comes to budget and financial oversight responsibilities.
Well, my, my approach to budgeting is I want to see all the information that went into any financial spreadsheets that I'm looking at. I like to see the background information, and I like to go back several years so that I can see what the trend has been. And then I like to do some forecasting into the future and get information from anyone who's willing to put information into that input structure so that any sort of financial decisions can be made with full information.
Thank you. Kathy Weir.
As far as financing, I have several larger clients that I work with, and I have a strict budget regarding what I'm available to spend or use. And I always try and get all of my clients the most out of their fiscal abilities to make sure that all individuals have the most for what they can pay for. So I tend to be relatively creative when it comes to finding areas to improve or adjust financial issues, so.
Thank you. Michael McKenzie.
First of all, my background with budgeting, when I ran the local union, it's a 650-member or some odd-member union, and so the budget was about three-quarters of a million dollars annual. So that, that's a lot of money and takes a lot of serious thought on that. It's also like the village here, it's, there's no loans that can be taken out. It's got to be, it's got to be zero-sum, and so I've done that for quite a few years. I would, I would say that the current mayor, for sure, has done a great job of keeping costs down, and she's to be commended for that. I'm not sure the current board has looked at the out years quite as closely as they could have, because there's some, some tail issues that, that seem to bite us in the butt every now and then, and that's something that I'd be focused on.
Thank you. Ryan Hankins.
Yeah, so I can give, I can give a few thoughts on budgeting and financing the city Burchwood. You know, we, we very much run the city on a shoestring budget, and we have, you know, and there are a number of challenges in Burchwood, partly because Burchwood is a small city, kind of in a sea of much larger cities, and that makes some of our city services harder to provide, you know, at cost-efficient, on a cost-efficient per-resident basis. I think we need to look very seriously at each and every one of our services. In particular, we need to look at planning and zoning. We also need to consider things like plowing and street maintenance. And there are no magic solutions, you know, as was said here, we have been run efficiently, but we also struggle to maintain high service levels for residents at very affordable costs with limited city staffing compared to larger municipalities.
Thank you. Anyone have something further to add? We'll go to the next question, and it will go first to Michael McKenzie, and the same topic of the budget. What are your priorities for the budget for the next two to four years?
Well, first of all, we have to keep within our budget, right? That is, like I said, has been done very well in recent years, and so that's something that has to continue. Again, I'd like to emphasize that even with budgeting, it feels to me that we're not quite as proactive as we could be. And we've always managed to work within our means and get everything covered, but we don't seem to look down the line and plan for it in advance and put aside money as well as we could, especially again with respect to making sure that the new projects today are backed up with money to keep them beautiful in the future.
Thank you. Ryan Hankins.
Yeah, so one thing I need, I think we need to take a very close look at is, when we look at Delwood and Willerney, those are cities that are similar to us in size and have much, much lower staffing costs. Grant Township has over 4,000 people and has approximately one full-time staff person. And so I don't think we need to try to get to Patty and Selma levels of service here in Burchwood, but I think we need to take, you know, a very close look at, at our staffing and how we can be efficient in, and making sure that if we are paying more for staffing, that our residents are indeed getting better levels of service than our neighbors.
Thank you. Question goes to Kathy Weir.
As far as the budgeting goes, I agree with Michael. We need to obviously stay within our allotted amount. Ideally, we don't want to have to raise taxes here as all of our services are paid for for taxes from our citizens. I do feel there is opportunities such as with the Halls Marsh cleanup that we want to do for outside grants and other sources of income for those special projects that are more of environmental-based, so there's possibilities for that. But there are also the ability to look at things closely and determine what we can cut, what we can't cut, what we need to improve, and what we need to save for.
Thank you. Margaret Ford.
I think it's important to look at the master plan and make sure that all the priorities that are in there now stated are still relevant, and I'd look for input from the community and those in the council to find out what the needs and wants of the community really are. I think it changes over time, and so that would be my first priority, is to find out whether the stated priorities are still relevant and be creative to tweak them. And also, I agree with Kathy, we want to be fiscally responsible, but we also, there's an opportunity to be creative and to try to find outside funds, legacy funds, other monies, to do special projects. And also, we have partners, you know, to the west, there are watershed issues that we might be able to work with them and do some cost sharing.
Thank you. Anyone have something further to add? Otherwise, we'll go to the next question, and it will go first to Margaret Ford. In 2021, the Burchwood City Council approved a 2040 comprehensive plan. What areas of that plan do you believe should be a priority to address in the next two to four years?
Well, I think the main priority is affordability for the citizens of Burchwood, to be able to live here, to keep the tax base stable and growing if we can. I think we are lucky in that our property values continue to rise because we're such a desirable enclave here, and so I think, I think that that would be my first priority.
Thank you. Kathy Weir.
I would like to try and determine where the, where the breaking point is for some of our citizens. We do have quite a few older retired groups in our neighborhood, and we also have some young families as well. So I feel that there is some portions we can gain by looking at what's available and what, where we can be financially, and then what people can actually sustain to make sure that everyone is still comfortable living here and getting to enjoy our lovely area.
Thank you. Michael McKenzie.
Yeah, I also agree. We need to go to the community and find out exactly what their priorities are. It wasn't that long ago that this was taken care of, but, but I think it could change relatively quickly. I think one of the priorities I would champion is, is going and trying to rebuild kind of a mutual respect and trust within the community. I think there's been a lot of stressors the last couple of years on everyone, and I think that's showing up in council meetings, and it's showing up in what has always been a very hospitable and friendly community, and it still is, don't get me wrong. But I think we need to focus on the citizens a little bit more and, and get all on the same page and move forward, and then some of these other priorities, I think, will rise to the top, and we can address them as they do.
Thank you. Ryan Hankins.
Can I just, can I first just say how glad I am that somebody actually read the master plan? And, you know, and I actually appreciate this, this sort of question. I'd love to talk to whoever asked this question about the master plan, because I've read that document, too, and there are a lot of things in there, and some of which I'm not sure apply as well to Burchwood in terms of some of, I mean, that document relates a lot to things like transportation and zoning, and is sort of, in some ways imposed upon as a little bit by the Met Council. You know, I, I do think we should think at very, very high level how we want our zoning to look, and one of the things we talked about a lot on the Planning Commission is, how much distance do we want between houses? How big do we want our setbacks to be? Do we want people to be able to build bigger houses? And I really think if we can put it in big enough terms, that we would get some very valuable input from residents on how they want, on how they want Burchwood just to kind of look in general, more trees, more parks, and so on, so. Let's, thank you.
Okay, so anyone have something further to add to this? We'll go to the next question otherwise, and it will go first to Ryan Hankins. What do you believe should be the relationship between the city and the Burchwood Dock Association going forward? What issues, if any, do you believe need to be resolved?
Yeah, so there's, so with respect to the Dock Association, first of all, I'm supportive of the Dock Association maintaining its autonomy. Second, I think we need to build a much, much more constructive, constructive relationship with the Dock Association so that it, this doesn't feel like we are in, in meetings with the Dock Association, you know, trying to feel like it's, it's in a tug-of-war, and then we get out the giant Fourth of July tug-of-war rope a couple of times a year with the Dock Association. You know, I, I think we need to see, and I think basically the answer, and one thing I've seen a lot with the Dock Association is they've come to city meetings, and this happens with other groups as well, and they just, they, they're on the agenda, and they don't know what's going on, and they feel like they're on the menu. And so I would just like to see us keep the Dock Association in the loop, try to work things out with them through our liaison, and make sure we can work through issues with them in as constructive a manner as possible without, you know, making threats.
Thank you. Michael McKenzie.
Yeah, I would just say, the changes that the Dock Association went through a few years back, I think were, were all great improvements, and I was in favor of all of those at the time. I think the Dock Association's not unusual with some other groups in the city in that the main problem seems to be one of communication and getting on the same page. And, and I think some of that can certainly be done at a board meeting, but I think it, not necessarily the best to do it at a board meeting. So I think there needs to be a little bit more outreach with the Dock Association and, and clarifying some of the goals on both sides and just working through them, because I don't think, I don't think anything is going terribly with the Dock Association. There just needs to be some better communication and better understanding.
Thank you. Question goes next to Kathy Weir.
I agree with everything that's been said thus far. There is the potential for a really great partnership with the Dock Association and our community. We can be mutually beneficial to each other. So I feel, I agree completely that there needs to be more of a liaison aspect to that to try and determine the best way to move forward, that it's mutually beneficial for everyone.
Thank you. And Margaret Ford.
Yes, I'm supportive of the Dock Association as well. It's a wonderful community good, having access to the lake, and, and yes, communication is always better than, part of my mission in running for mayor is to foster very good communication amongst all stakeholders. So I think, I think that would be a good goal, and perhaps even a committee that, that might hash out some of these issues in advance of council meetings so that the association feels supported.
Thank you. Anything further? Okay, we'll go to the next question. I'll go first to Michael McKenzie. How would you deal with an expansion of Burchwood walking paths if there are owners along the path who object?
Oh, that's a tough one. First of all, I think I'd have to take a step back from there and, and take a long, hard look at where the need for more walking paths is coming from, what the usage would be, would they really be taken advantage of? It wasn't that many years ago, we built a walking path through Ty Schmidt Park that was virtually never used, and it just was left alone to grow over. was virtually never used, and it just was left alone to grow over. I'd hate to put good money into more walking paths that aren't necessarily used enough. And I'd also hate to start the process of trying to take land away from one neighbor to let other neighbors use it. So I'd have to study that long and hard, and I'd have to get a lot of neighborhood input from that to see what the desire is really there and whether it's warranted. Because that could open up a lot of hard feelings if it wasn't done systematically and deliberately.
Thank you. Question goes next to Ryan Hankins.
Yeah, so this is certainly, certainly an interesting question. The city did add one path, and I think it's great, and it's actually right around Kathy's house. And Kathy was willing to work with the city to kind of put the community good first there and worked with the city, and they, you know, the community club put in a bench, the city paid for slab. And I am very supportive of that sort of arrangement, and I, you know, I think that that's great when the city can work with residents and when residents like Kathy and candidates like Kathy are willing to, you know, kind of put in, you know, look to the greater good of the community. I think there are other cases in Birchwood where we need to, where areas where we might put a path there much are different, and we need to work with residents in those cases very carefully and gain consensus around where we expand walking paths in Birchwood to make sure that the community good of a path outweighs the, whatever it causes to a resident, so.
Thank you. Margaret Ford.
Yeah, I agree with both Michael and Ryan. I think that we have a lot of community goods that are in Birchwood that are wonderful, but they, but they need maintenance. And so I think before we start to think about creating more community goods that need maintenance, we should try to take care of the ones we have. And so I think before I would expand, recommend expanding, I would make sure that what we have is operating beautifully.
Thank you. Kathy Weir.
As Ryan says, I do have a unique perspective on this one, the J-Path, if you know where it is, is my backyard. That went in actually right after I bought my house, so I did get to work very closely with city council at that time to discuss potential plantings and various other things to offer my family privacy and such whilst the walking path was going into my backyard. I do agree that we do need more maintenance on our current existing systems and areas. There's also the legality issue of putting in a walking path in someone's yard if there's an easement or various other things as far as you can't overstep that. And then I would like to, I've never seen this Ty Schmidt walking path, so that if there is these potentials to other walking paths that we already have potentially, that would be a good spot to utilize some of those areas that we haven't yet.
Anything further from anyone?
I just want to make an additional comment that there is a path that goes right behind my property too, Ash Path, and it is used enthusiastically by people of all ages and dogs, and we love it.
If you don't know where the Ty Schmidt path was, you can't see it anymore.
I was gonna say, I love the J-Path. I get to meet all the people.
Okay, to the next question, and it will begin with Kathy Weir. Please give examples of how you have been able to work productively with those who do not share your opinions. How have you dealt with supporting decisions you did not agree with?
So as far, I get to work quite often, actually, with individuals who I don't necessarily support everything, but my job as a person who would be representing others is to take everyone's opinions and views into, into respect when I'm making a decision. I generally get along with most people or can get along with most people. So I'm an easygoing individual, so that helps, but it's also something where my job would be to get along with people. That is my responsibility to figure out how to do that.
Thank you. Margaret Ford.
Well, my entire career, 35-year career as a lawyer, was spent getting others to do what they did not want to do in property tax law. But my, my way of dealing with people was to say, and I think I mentioned it earlier, you know, if everyone is reasonable, we'll be able to come to a conclusion. And I think with communication and listening and kindness and data, I think that's important too. I think often when there's a conflict, it's because somebody is emotional or they don't know the facts. And once they're educated and mutual education too, then often a good result can be, can be worked toward. And it might not be the one that either party feels is the best for them, but it's one that they can with grace accept. And that's what I would always work towards when I'm dealing with a problem.
Thank you. Question goes next to Ryan Hankins.
Yeah, so I appreciate that question because I, and I want to, you know, add a little bit to what Margaret said. I appreciate that, and I think coming to decisions in city government when everybody is reasonable is, is a very nice thing to do. What I saw and have seen, having attended a lot of city council meetings, is that there are very, very many cases when not everybody is reasonable. And one of the things that I, where I've seen the city council members, you know, try to do is the, the goal becomes not to make a decision, but it becomes to convince other people that, that the decision is correct. And to me, city government is always going to have to make decisions that are hard and that not everybody agrees with. We need to, to stop trying to convince our residents that they're wrong and try to gain and build as much consensus as we can. And it's the job of the city council to be reasonable when residents are not.
Thank you. And Michael McKenzie.
Well, I would say the first issue with coming together and making decisions when there's disagreement is to slow down and listen more than, than you talk. I would build kind of common understandings and build out from there. I think once you have common parameters and common understandings on the thing, you can agree with what you're already agreeing with, and then you can look at the areas of disagreement and address those. I really believe that this is one of the areas that, that I would be most excited in dealing with, and that is, I think people really respect decisions, even the ones that they don't particularly like, as long as they respect the process and they feel they were respected within the process. And that's something I think we can improve.
Thank you. Anything further from anyone?
Yeah, I would, I would really echo what, and I should be a little careful here. I think our residents are usually reasonable people. But, I mean, I do, I think we can all acknowledge that people get into frustrated situations. And I would really echo what Michael said here about, we need to make sure that whether or not, you know, that, that our process is basically good. And I agree with that. And we can't necessarily control how people feel about the outcomes in all cases, but I do think we need to make sure that we take the inputs into account and do the right thing, you know, even when people are not perfectly making their cases in front of the city council.
Any other comments further? We'll go to the next question, and Ryan Hankins will begin it. How would you go about seeking input from the community? How would you use that input in setting policies and direction for the city?
Yeah, so that's a good question. And what I think we need to do as the city council is take input as, and consider the input to be, you know, what, what people have find wrong in the city. And so maybe building permits take too long, maybe sign enforcement in our city is unfair or uneven, you know, maybe those things are the case. I think rather than though, and I think the solution to things like sign enforcement is, is not to come to the council every month and tell them about your, you know, and, and to make your problem clear. I think residents will do that. I think it is the job of the council to, to figure out that a problem exists with our sign code and to make sure that we fix that for people so that the council comes up with a solution, and we do that by finding out what people's problems are, not by demanding that they bring the solutions to us themselves.
Thank you. Kathy Weir.
Our city has a unique role that we can play, which is that we have a little newsletter that goes out with our various billing, and, and there's that opportunity for our website to have the ability for individuals to submit questions or needs or concerns that then the city council and the mayor would be able to deliberate on. But we also have quite a few active, if not well-attended at the moment, groups of individuals who are really dedicated to different areas. In our area of expertise, there's a planning commission, there's a tree commission. Utilizing those individuals who are already working on those projects and problems would be able to determine the most areas of focus for our group.
Thank you. Margaret Ford.
Yeah, I think as many conduits of taking in information from the community that we have is, is good. I, I think that oftentimes, citizens don't feel comfortable just coming to a council meeting and stating, stating their concerns. So I think it's nice to have other ways for people to get those concerns in front of the council, in front of the mayor. And then I also think there should be a mechanism whereby if someone does state a concern that someone acknowledges that they had that and that it will be addressed. And I, and I love committee systems. I think you can't have too many committees, but if you have just the right amount of committees to deal with separate issues, those committees can be really empowered to find, find some solutions and then bring them to, to the mayor and to the council and, and really work with the citizens closely.
Thank you. Michael McKenzie.
Well, as was mentioned earlier, the city used to have a much more robust advisory committee situation than we do now, and I'd like to see that reconstituted and bolstered a little bit. I think when people can get involved in what their particular passion is, you're, you're more likely to get high-quality input and you're more likely to end up with high-quality answers. I think it's important that when those committees make a recommendation, that recommendation is taken seriously by the council. And frankly, if it's a committee like a variance committee with very rare exception, their, their recommendations should be followed. They're, they're the ones studying it in depth. They're the ones that have the expertise, and, and we need to respect that and respect the work they've done. And I'm not sure that that's always the case right now.
Anything further? Kathy Weir.
I would completely agree that we, as a mayoral or city council, do not need to have all the answers, that we have a very smart and dedicated community that can provide lots of guidance.
Yeah, I would, I would add, I wouldn't, I would like, I agree, and I appreciate these comments on committees. I think one of the things we need to consider with committees is not only are they a way for people to, to offer input, but committees are also a way for us to get people into government at a less, at a lower level of commitment and maybe a lower level of experience than council positions. And so I think it's really important moving forward that we pull people in, and, and committees in and of themselves are a way to do that even without any other end or any other accomplishment by the committee.
I had one further question, Mary, or comment. You don't know what kind of gifts are out there in the community, you know, until you ask and, and ask for input. And so I think that people, you know, when, in my conversations with people on my walks, I feel that there is a hunger for people to be involved, and they, and they want to be, and, and I'm, I think they should be.
Go to the next question, and it will begin with Michael McKenzie. How would you deal with any unexpected major and potentially divisive issue that might arise during your term?
That might arise?
That might arise.
I would say it's likely. But at any rate, again, going back to, I think it's, it's important that we kind of rebuild some of the sense of community, rebuild some of the sense of trust. I think if, if the community sees a more systematic approach and they understand the way decisions are made, that, that will head off at the pass a lot of problems. But as, as was said earlier, there's going to be things that people just don't agree on. And then it comes down to making sure that you're good listeners, making sure that there's opportunity for input, making sure there's mutual respect. And I really do believe that even if people disagree with the decision, they can respect the decision if they can respect the process.
Thank you. Ryan Hankins.
Yeah, so I'm not, I'm not, well, I feel like I should make a joke about divisive issues in Birchwood, but, you know, I think these arise a lot. And all, all I can say is, you know, we've seen, we saw, have seen people very upset with various decisions. You know, a good example was, was the barrier up there. And things like the barrier, it's very important to pay attention because even an issue that seems to people as clear as the barrier, there are often a very, very broad variety of opinions in Birchwood. And the way to deal with that is, again, to just look at how we can maximize the good of the community with these decisions, you know. And ultimately, I agree with listening and with deliberation, all with the goal of saying, how do we figure out what's best for the whole community here? You know, rather than arguments and trying to badger people into, into taking a viewpoint, you know, just that end goal of maximizing community good.
Thank you. Margaret Ford.
Yes, well, I think, I think the theme is, is universal. It's respectful communication. I think that often, division and anger and fear arise from the fact that people feel that they had not been heard or they don't understand the issue. And so I think the, the more that we can communicate with everybody about an issue that may be divisive, I, I think we're gonna have a better outcome and, and community buy-in. You know, not, not everyone has to buy in 100%, but at least enough so that we can move forward with a positive path if there's, if there's a tricky issue.
Thank you. Kathy Weir.
Something I have noticed that the current city council has done on some of the larger issues that are not immediate concerns is that they take additional time to deliberate and determine and think through things. I feel that's very important with anything that is going to affect everyone in a very significant manner. I, I know that there will be contention and argumentative aspects of any decision that's made, or hopefully not, but hopefully there won't be things that the general populace feels that we took advantage of or decided hastily. But again, listening for community and input from everyone is wonderful, and then also taking into account the best opportunity to do something that will benefit everyone or as many as possible.
Thank you. Anything further? Michael McKenzie.
I'd like to tie this in with the current issue with the tree marking. There's a situation that I think, obviously, we have to take into account state statute and state recommendations and city codes and all of those things, but we really have to take something like that and, and put the citizens in the middle and, and deal with the citizen outward instead of the other way around. We've got to deal with real-world consequences. It might sound great to cut down six diseased trees, but if that's the $6,000 coming out of your pocket, that has to be considered. And I'm not sure that, I, I think it's easy to forget that. It's easy to go by codes and statutes and whatnot, and here's our decision, but that decision has real-world consequences for residents, and we always have to keep that at the, at the middle.
Thank you. Anything further? Ryan Hankins.
I think the city council, we're gonna have five brand-new people on the city council in January, and I think the number one thing the city council needs to do is, is establish a laser focus on what is the best thing we can do for all of our residents.
Anything further? And this will be our last question coming up. It will go first to Kathy Weir. to Kathy Weir. With so many ash trees being infected by ash borers, what initiatives would you support to help citizens through this crisis?
So I had lived in White Bear proper, prior to living in Birchwood, and I had moved here. But at the time, I had a ash tree in my yard. And White Bear had done a program that they combined with several treatment facilities. There's a way to actually treat ash borer before it becomes a problem. And that was something that the community of White Bear had actually offered to residents, where it was an extended treatment of your trees, to allow you to divert the cost over a period of time. There are those different aspects of possible treatments out there for ash borers. And if a tree hasn't become to the point where it's already going to die, there is a treatment method where you could extend the life of the tree, and hopefully divert the removal of the trees to many years, as opposed to immediate need, which I think is a, a big cost burden on both the city and the individual homeowners.
Thank you. Margaret Ford.
Well, it, it, it is an expensive proposition. And I think that if, if it doesn't need to be done immediately for, for the health of the rest of the trees, then maybe we can have some grace periods for those who really do not have that money in their budgets to, to remove the trees, or treat the trees. And also, there might be some opportunities, too, for kind of community chest cost sharing for, for this project. I know that in, in other communities, there, there is a forestry fund, and people contribute to it, and, and those who have a need can apply for funds. And so I think that might be an option to explore.
Thank you. Ryan Hankins.
Yeah, I, I mean, I agree with those things. I, I think the scope of the emerald ash borer problem in Birchwood is, is, is so large, that we're going to be doing all we can to cut down the ci, the most important city trees. And, you know, we, we do have one grant that we're dealing with in Polly's Park. I think some of the concerns I've heard voiced on this relate to dealing with the trees on residents' property. First of all, we need to stop spraying those great big orange stripes onto people's trees. We can't cut them down all the way, and it looks awful. The other thing is, I think we need to be very, very circumspect about how we deal with trees on residents' property. Our, our tree inspector simply can't be going onto private property without explicit permission. You know, and I'm in favor of some sort of, of, you know, voluntary arrangement there. And the other thing is, I think the city, if the city does find diseased trees on public or on private property, we need to very carefully evaluate and prioritize those trees, so that we are protecting property. At this point, we're not going to cut, cut down trees to stop the spread of emerald ash borer. It has to be solely for saving life and property.
Ryan, thank you. You'll have more time to follow up if you need to. Michael McKenzie.
I'm going to pick up where Ryan left off, because I, I'm not sure people realize that the, the standard answer to this kind of problem ten years ago, and the standard answer now are two different things. The, the borer has a effective range of several miles, so we could cut down every diseased tree in Birchwood tonight, and it wouldn't stop the ash borer from moving around, and coming to us from outside the community. With the understanding that we're not stopping this bug pandemic by cutting down Birchwood trees, then we have to focus on what's best for the citizens, and what's reasonable for the citizens, and move forward protecting life and limb, but not necessarily worrying about the ash trees, because the experts have pretty much come to the conclusion, their day is coming, and there's nothing we can do about it.
Anything further? In which case, we'll go on to the closing statements, and it will be in reverse order of the way you started. So, we'll begin with Michael McKenzie.
All right. Let me get my stuff organized here. First of all, I'm Michael McKenzie, and I'm asking for your vote, because I love Birchwood, but I think we can be better. We can minimize our differences and maximize our strengths. We can and should create board meetings that are more welcoming. We can and should place residents at the center of every decision. And we can and should create a systematic decision-making approach that's inclusive, empathetic, and looks for ways to say yes to residents. I've said it before, the many citizen leaders who've helped run the city in the past, including our outgoing councilman and mayor, deserve our thanks for their efforts. This election is exciting, because as Ryan mentioned, it offers us a chance for a change leadership model, and a model that will seek out and take advantage of fresh, fresh perspectives and new ideas. I have a website, if you want to go to it.[1292.61][1292.61](Laughter) McKenzieforbirchwoodmayor.com. Thank you. Please vote.
Thank you. Margaret Ford.
Well, I, I, my campaign for mayor of Birchwood is, the slogan is "Come Together", and that's what I hope that we can do as a community, even more. When, after I retired in 2020, my husband and I retired to Birchwood. And we love it here. We, I, I, I feel that this is a very unique community. And now that I have all this time on my hands, I think I can use my life experiences to serve, serve the community in this way, as mayor. And I, I have also other deep experience with Birchwood, in that my husband's family is from White Bear Lake. And since 1987, I've been riding my bike around White Bear Lake, and running with, with the crazy group of extended family, up to sometimes thirty people. And we always love it when we get past the Birchwood Hills. And, and so, it's, it's a beautiful place, and I would use all my experience to bring this community together, and make it even more wonderful.
Thank you. Kathy Weir.
I'd like to thank you, Mary, and then the League of Women Voters as well, for holding this, so that voters have the opportunity to hear the answers to their various questions. So, thank you for that. As far as my personal beliefs and goals as a city council member, I really would like to emphasize making our community very tight-knit. I would like more community involvement. And also, I'm looking to hopefully improve some of our public spaces, to utilize those resources we already have, and to help clean up our, our marsh, which is fairly dirty at the moment. We need to have it fixed. So, those are the three areas that I'm really looking to focus on my own attention. But I also would like to utilize some of my current skills and my degree. I am a graphic designer, and also spend a lot of time working with various customers and clients, doing newsletters and other aspects to gain that community involvement. So I'm hoping to offer that to the Birchwood Village residents.
Thank you. Ryan Hankins.
Yeah, so, my name is Ryan Hankins. I would just like to emphasize that I, I'm really excited, because I think we have an opportunity for a new path forward here in January, with, with a little bit of fresh slate. And I, you know, I've had maybe more involvement with city government here than, than just about anybody, and that scares me a little bit, because, you know, it's, it's a big, very breakable city, and we are making a complete, you know, a complete break from the existing administration. We are going to make mistakes. We're going to have to figure things out. And, you know, I hope the city council can be as forgiving with our residents going forward, as, as our residents, I think, have had to be with, with some of the past, with the city council in the past. I think we just need to return this community to a, with, to a laser focus on what is good for our residents and our community. And every question the city council decides needs to have that first and foremost in mind. And that, listening is great. I agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our forum for Birchwood Mayor and Council. The League of Women Voters thanks you, the candidates, for putting yourself forward for election to serve your community. This forum will be placed on our YouTube channel, League of Women Voters, White Bear Lake area. And you can also look for it on your cable channel, nineteen, I believe, or sixteen, your city channel. And so, that concludes it. Thank you. And remember to vote on or before November eighth, and early voting is in progress. Thank you.